Volume on your speakers there for our folks tuning in online. Make sure you're turned up all the way so that they can hear. All right, just a quick, couple of quick items for the board before we get into our festivities. I have everybody's updated cellphone numbers now, so I'll be able to give that group chat one more time for reminders, we'll give that another try. We will be celebrating our Governor's Educator of the Year and Ed Service Professional of the Year today, sounds exciting, stay tuned for that. Just a quick reminder, it's time for Board Evaluations. That email just went out and should be completed by June 15th. So if you, and then that way we'll get the results from school boards for the fall, I believe, right? Yeah. Also, we've been registered for the 25-26 New Jersey School Boards Association Workshop in October, choose that last full week of October. So everybody's invited, you know, encouraged to attend if you're able to, it's a great, great learning experience. You know, I've gone a bunch of times now and always come back with something good. And with that, we'll move on to our Teacher of the Year.
Can I say something really quick?
Yeah.
In, in response to what you were saying about the, the volume. So I was away for the, for the special meeting last week or week before, and the audio was horrible, I couldn't hear anything. So also anyone speaking in front of that microphone, if we can just speak loud and clear. And also the, the, the audio cut out halfway through too, so. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I had my AirPods on with silent mode as loud as possible, and I could barely hear anyone say anything, so just, you know, for, for historical reasons that this is going to be on YouTube and other people watching in public, just make sure we all speak up loud. Thank you.
Pick the mic up and go to town, can you hear me? Okay, I'm very honored to be here tonight to present this special award. I'm going to try to get through without any tears, but this is, this is a little bit different because he is not just our Teacher of the Year, this is also the last year we will have a chance to spend working by his side. So again, truly special year, I'm a truly special person to receive this honor. So I'm going to call Mr. Michael McCarty up here so I can present him with his award. So yes, I'm right there and hope you don't cry with me, but. So we are so honored to recognize Mr. Michael McCarty as our 2025 Oakland Public School Teacher of the Year. With 25 years of unwavering dedication to our district, Mr. McCarty has made a permanent impact on countless students, staff, and families. Beginning his journey as a classroom teacher, Mr. McCarty has taught nearly at a grade level, always bringing energy, creativity, and compassion into his work. Most recently, he has served as a Learning Acceleration Teacher, earning the nickname "The Data Man" from his peers, thanks to his tireless commitment to analyzing student progress and finding meaningful ways to help each learner succeed. Mr. McCarty's legacy goes far beyond numbers, he is known for the deep lasting relationships he builds with his students and all of us. So many of whom return years later just to say thank you. He reads with heart, lifts up those around him, and brings warmth and wisdom into every corner of our school. OPS is better because of him, Mr. McCarty is and always will be a part of our school community. For all who have had the privilege of learning from or working alongside of him, he will be remembered not only as an outstanding educator, but as one of the truly great ones. Thank you, Mr. McCarty, for everything. And congratulations, this is well overdue.
Just so you can actually see that you're official.
There I am, through my name. Thank you, thank you so much. Can I say something?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Okay. I feel so honored in receiving this award, and I thank the board, I thank the community here, you know, I'm not only a teacher here, I'm also a member of this community. And it's really been a privilege to teach here. I've been in this 25 years here, but I also subbed here three years before, so I've been 28 years I've been around these students. And it's been, always been a pleasure to come here every single day to work with students, no matter what grade level I was assigned, you know, from the beginning I was the kindergarten teacher, you know, down on the ground with the kids, to my latest stunt here now, which is the Learning Accelerator Teacher. And I'm very proud to, I've worked in this district, my family here is the school family, but is also my own family. Without their support and love, I could not have done this job, because we all know that being a teacher is one of the most rewarding positions you could ever do, because you do affect everyone that you work with. And my school family, especially, especially Mr. Lawyer for, you know, nominating me and the rest of my colleagues here, I'll definitely miss all of them because they are like, they are my second family. And my biggest joy over here is I had Aiden over here. I had him, so he's one of my, you know, success stories. So, and I hope that I've impacted every student that I've ever taught, you know, because I've learned so much from them, and I hope they have learned a lot from me to succeed in life. And I will definitely miss everyone, and I appreciate everyone coming tonight, I appreciate, thank you, Ms. Spalding, thank you, Ms. Soloway, thank you again, Ally, and all the other staff that came tonight, I really appreciate, you know, all of you, and definitely will miss you. Thank you.
I get a, I get a follow-up to that, that's going to be tough. Good evening, hi everyone, I'm Ms. Soloway, and this is my, end of my third year as an administrator, my 19th year in the district, and I remember Mr. McCarty in kindergarten when I started, and pushing in and doing GNT, and he was a wonderful support as a novice teacher back then. So thank you for that, Mr. McCarty. I also recognized in my career here how important not just our teachers are, but our instructional assistants, and I really felt like it was important to start, you know, recognizing those, they are outsourced, however, they are like committed, they are part of our school community, and they're committed to our children in the building, and this is our second year of our Instructional Assistant of the Year, so I have a little something to say about Ms. Maria Papoulis, if she could come up here, please. Maria is being recognized for incredible kindness, patience, and caring nature. She builds strong, meaningful relationships with her students, making sure they feel loved, respected, and supported, not just academically, but emotionally as well. Maria consistently goes above and beyond, always engaging with students, maintaining a calm, positive demeanor. Additionally, she's not only dependable and supportive of her coworkers, but she is also an active and valued member of our school community. Each day, Maria shows up with a worn smile and a joyful attitude, bringing light and energy to everything she does. Her dedication to making every day the best it can be is truly inspiring. Please join me in congratulating Maria Papoulis, a shining example of what it means to serve with heart and excellence.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Do you want the coffee bag?
I do, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for us, we have some more friends. I think we have some more to say.
Hi, everyone, my name is Colton, I want to say, say a big thank you to Ms. Maria, thank you for helping me and me and finish my work, you always make, make me look a little better when I'm leaving, having a hard day, and you help me learn things, I like reading and math, and how to be kind, you smile at me every morning, and that makes me happy, and I like, yeah. Hey, Mark?
Yeah, Marky?
I love when you sit with me and help me and members or do writing, you are the best helper ever, and I'm really glad you are a class, thank you, Ms. Maria, love lighting with you. Thank you. I have a joke.
Just say thank you, Ms. Maria. Say thank you, Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Ms. Maria.
I'll go real quick. All right, good evening, I'll try to get through it, after Colton, it's going to be hard. Good evening, Board of Ed, families, Oakland community, my name is Lisa Stibbard, I'm a K-2 self-contained teacher and Oakland resident, and it's my absolute pleasure to stand before you today to recognize and celebrate someone truly special. Oakland School's Assistant, Instructional Assistant of the Year, Maria Papoulis. This award is not just about excellence, it's about heart, dedication, and the often quiet yet powerful impact one person can have on the entire school community. Here at Oakland School, Maria Papoulis embodies all of that and more. Maria and I have worked together now for four years, and I couldn't imagine my classroom without her. Instructional Assistants are often the unsung heroes of our classrooms, though the steady support, the encouraging voice, the extra pair of hands, and sometimes the extra heart that our students and teachers rely on every single day, it is without a doubt that our classrooms, mine especially, would be lost without them. Maria, your commitment to our students goes far beyond your job description, whether it's your patience and calm demeanor guiding students, offering a word of encouragement, or simply showing up with a positive attitude, you make a difference in ways that can always be measured, but are always felt. Your ability to connect with students, understand their unique needs, and support them in their educational journey is truly commendable. You remind us of, of the greatness, that greatness isn't always loud, it can be found in the quiet moments, in the consistency and the compassion you bring to work every day. This award is a testament to the countless moments you've spent guiding, encouraging, and uplifting those around you. On behalf of the entire school community, thank you for your tireless efforts, your unwavering dedication, the light you bring to the students' lives, we wouldn't be the same without you.
Congratulations to both of you, let's give them another round of applause. I have a brief statement to read from our Vice President, Mrs. Marmion, who couldn't be here tonight, but, Mr. McCarty, this is for you, and she asked me to share this. Mr. McCarty, I'm so sorry I can't be there in person to celebrate you, but please know that I'm cheering you on from afar. Congratulations on this incredibly well-deserved honor and your much-earned retirement. Your unwavering dedication to our students and our school community has left a lasting mark that will never be forgotten. Thank you for being a constant source of kindness, encouragement, and light to every child who walked through your classroom door. You made a difference in more lives than you'll ever know. Wishing you joy, rest, and adventure in this next chapter. You've earned every moment of it. Therese.
I also, I also just want to quick say, it's crazy because I was thinking about it earlier, and this is 10 years since I've been in your classroom, which it's just crazy how fast time flies, but thank you for everything you did and impact on me and all my classmates. I still, I still have like the beach ball from the end of the school year, where you had all of us sign it at the end of the year, I still have that. So, so thank you, thank you so much. I thank, I thank again the board, Dr. McDowell, thank you for everything, you know, and I, I've just kind of looked again, I've like, I've had every pretty much board member, I've had your children somewhere along the line, so, yep, so even Mr. Spalding. So thank you again, very much.
Going out on the top of his game, he's good at break.
Thank you.
For the folks watching online, we're just doing some celebratory photos and then we'll plow on through the agenda. All right, any other topics from the board before we close out Committee of the Hall? Yeah, we're all, we're all alone now. All right, no, no additional updates for Committee of the Hall, we got a motion to close out.
Still moved.
Second. Moving on to second, and moving on to item four, future dates and miscellaneous information. I'm sure we'll hit some of these dates as we get into our committee updates, but all upcoming events are outlined in the agenda. Moving on to item five, routine board and business, we have a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion on second, all in favor to approve meeting minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to our first public comment section of the evening, all participants are reminded to please stand, state your name and address, and keep comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this first public comment section is to address or discuss items listed on the agenda only. Addition, more general comments will be made later on in the public, second public comment section. Everyone's reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through the appropriate staff members and administrators. Any public comments? All right. We'll close out our first public comment section, moving on to item seven, Superintendent's Report.
So good evening, everyone, we are not going to gaslight the audience at home. After the Educator of the Year awards, everyone went home. And so it is just board and staff, and so thank you for joining us online. Section 7.01 is the Enrollment Report, which is attached, April of 2024 enrollment was 269, April of 2025 is 272, and 7.02 is the Safety Drill Report, and that is also attached, and a few just announcements to share with the community. And so we want to just recognize again, our Instructional Assistant of the Year, Maria Papoulis, as well as our Oakland Teacher of the Year, Mr. McCarty. 28 years of service is nothing short of phenomenal, and so we are truly appreciative for, for his service as well as the service and commitment of all of our staff. We'd like to thank the Oakland PTA for stepping up and supporting our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5th through the 9th. We appreciate their generosity as we celebrate the dedication of our staff. We will be making sure that we send out additional communication this week about the calendar updates for the 25-26 school year with one really exciting new feature. Families will be able to download the calendar to their phones, to their Google calendars, and it will be able to be updated automatically whenever there are changes, courtesy of Mr. McMillan, holding us accountable for the last year, making sure that we did that, and so we are delivering on that promise. Thank you, Jimmy. We also want to make sure that families are aware that preschool letters are, are going out and have been sent out to families, and please check to make sure that you have secured your spot. We're also still actively in the process of focusing on kindergarten enrollment, and so please register as soon as possible. During the summer, Oakland will also be the site again for the Healthy Kids Summer Program. We will also be sending out additional registration information for families that have not received it. The program will operate June 23rd through August 15th of this year. In addition, it's really important because of the magnitude, we also want to share a few updates from the middle school. And so on May 14th, 68 outstanding middle school students from Collingswood and Oakland were inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. A packed auditorium, students were celebrated, celebrated by friends and family, and so we would like to thank the advisors, Ms. Tosh and Ms. Gillen, for organizing the event, and we're extremely proud of the student leaders and what they will achieve in the future. And so one of the most important pieces of honorees is not just academic excellence, but also community service. And so we had students that were logging in hundreds of community service hours, and so we're looking forward to what these young people will do in the future. We also want to bring positive attention on May 9th and 10th to the Fifth Annual Broadway Night, and so at our high school, we had students that performed a showcase of musical theater and film with iconic songs, like Anything Goes Into the Woods, Descendants, La La Land, Rocky Horror Picture Show, and many, many more. And what was especially enjoyable this year was the showcase was directed and led by students in the class of 2025. And so we would just like to publicly thank all of our students for an amazing year of performances. And so in addition, the high school Lady Panthers softball team won the 2025 Colonial Conference Patriot Division Championship, and so for the first time in, in Collingswood High School softball program history. And so we wanted to just send an additional congratulations to the team, as well as Coach Pence for a successful season, and we're already talking about repeat, and so we're looking forward to next year as well. And so our PAWS TV, so our student filmmakers were celebrating Raina Barr for winning a Student Emmy for the winter sports commercial called Unleash the Panther, and so overall, our, our high school students received five Emmy nominations, and so we're extremely proud for what they have been able to achieve this particular season, and we thank Ms. Armino for leading this successful program. In addition, Collingswood High School won the South Jersey 10-Day Film Challenge for 2025, as well as being the winners of Best Use of Dialogue and Best Genre. And so their film titled Taken was the award-winning film, and so the 10-day film challenge is an intense 10-day challenge where teams of students, they create a, a film, they write, they shoot, they edit, and score in 10 school days, only during their film class period, and so they get roughly 10 hours to actually do from start to finish. And so on day one, they get the character, prop, line of dialogue, and genre that needs to be included within their movie, and then 10 days later it must be completed. And so we submitted six films to this competition, and our students won Best Film. And so we will be sending out all of the films, as well as the award-winning films, to our community for them to also to enjoy. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Moving on to item eight, Business Administrator, Board Secretary Report.
All right, and item 9.01 is your April 2025 monthly budget transfers, 9.02 are your financial statements, so your Board Secretaries Report, Treasurer's Reports. 9.03 is listing of the purchase orders issued during the month of May, and then 9.04 is a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning, pending approval tonight, and just FYI for the Finance Committee, Jimmy heard this last night, I did schedule the annual audit, everybody get excited, but end of July, beginning of August, the auditors will be out to audit both Oakland and Collingswood School District books, and that's my report.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee. We're looking to approve regular business, 9.01 is the approval of budget transfers, 9.02 and 0.03 is the approval of certifications of no over expenditures, 9.04 is the approval of Secretary Treasurer Reports, and 9.05 and 0.06 is approval of purchase orders and warrants. Under new business, we have 9.07 is motion to approve the 25-26 tax remittance schedule as presented. 9.08 is motion to approve the addendums to the agreement with ESS to provide various staffing services on a as-needed basis for the upcoming school year. 9.09, motion to approve real-time information technology as our integrated online special education management module. 9.10, motion to approve contract with Virtual Health to provide physical therapy services. 9.11, motion to approve Interactive Kiss to provide behavioral consultation and BACBA services. 9.12 is motion to approve the contract with Laurel Therapy to provide occupational therapy services, and 9.13 is approval of an asset disposal And 9.13 is approval of an asset disposal, which is our kiln. Do we have a motion to approve those items, 9.01 through 9.13?
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions before we vote? Just a couple quick items from our committee updates. There was some, which is updating the new tax levy formulas on the state's end, right? But we're in good shape now. Yeah, so it's all settled. I just saw the committee and boards aware, we started a new routine with the Oakland Fire Department, where they've done walkthroughs of the building with new firefighters, allowing them to get an idea of a way out of the building in the event of any kind of emergency. So that went really well, and something we're looking to continue moving forward. With that, on a vote, on a roll call.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to item 10, Curriculum and Personnel Committee. All right, I'm just gonna run down our agenda items there since Mr. Schaefer's not here tonight. Just give me one moment.
All right. Okay, we do not have any field trips. The first item is an out-of-district placement for a student. Second item's out-of-district placement for another child. We also seek approval for Alex's lemonade stand. Ms. Miller's fourth grade students are gonna host a lemonade stand to raise money for Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation. That's gonna be on June 11th. It's gonna run from 2:45 when the preschool dismisses to about 3:30. And then if it rains, they're gonna do it the following day. The next item is Claudine Handel, Handle, hopefully I'm saying her name correctly, is retiring effective January 1st of 2026. The next item is approving unpaid medical leave for an employee. The next item is AED training, so we have some staff members that are gonna be doing AED training over the summer. And that is it, just need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, on a roll call.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, motion passes. Just one quick comment on the curriculum personnel, just one of the big conversations we had as we were discussing the budget and tax levy adjustments was the out-of-district costs. And so these kind of pop up out of nowhere, you know, when students move into the town and that type of thing. The case in point, we had to approve this month, so.
Moving on to item 11, School Community Relations and Policy Committee, Mr. McMillan.
I'll be subbing in for Ms. Marmion tonight. So 10.01, or 11.01 is Collingswood, and that's by me. So last night I attended the Collingswood School Board, and we had two presentations starting off, also just like tonight, we did the teacher of the year, staff members of the year with the pre-K teacher, Brian Gross, the pre-K assistant, Ellen Tonsberg, middle school teacher was Kristen Tosh, high school teacher was Taryn Silverman, the district support was Wayne Matthews, and secondary instructional assistant was Bernadette Jefferson. A lot of people came out for that. I think we maybe reused the balloons from last night for tonight, but so that was one of the presentations. And the other was the Collingswood High School Student Voice Action Committee, which was really interesting to me, I wanted to comment on it, but I left it alone. But it's a group of students working with the staff to communicate together and is to provide more student input, greater sense of belonging, improve climate and culture, support responsive classroom practices. So it's ultimately a melting pot of equal input from student body, student leaders, teachers, admins, department leaders. They use surveys with each other and interviews, so I like the idea of students communicating with the teachers a little bit more and then kind of not just having that hierarchy, so they can bring a little bit more input to their classroom. See, there was a number of relevant topics that Dr. McDowell spoke about, which he kind of repeated them tonight, so it's the same ones. There's a number of public comments, mostly about contracts, as per usual, until we get that finished. Roger Chu went, responded to a lot of the public comments, saying that we're working on certifying the budget this week, and coming on the June meeting with details about the contracts. He's definitely interested, or the board is definitely interested, in increasing the salary guides. The last three contracts over the last 10 years have been below county averages or right at county averages, so we want to fix that, right? So there's a lot going on. Let's see, and there was also, I think I missed a page somewhere. Oh yeah, and then the mass amount of end of the year and upcoming dates, including, but not limited to, it would take me all day to read them all, but CHS Athletic Awards on June 3rd, the Board Roundtable on June 5th, Garfield 5th Grade Dinner on June 11th, High School Ignite Graduation on the 12th, and the 5th Grade Pool Party, which Oakland has also included in, on June 16th, and then the last day of school on June 20th. And that's about it.
Do we have a question for that, the first item we were talking about, the student voice? Like, how would students get selected for that process? Or did they talk about that?
So I think this just started in August of this year, and you know, the importance is to keep it ongoing and keep this fire ignited. I don't know exactly how they got picked. I don't know if it was, but there are, there is a consultant that is working with staff that works with the students. So again, it was a melting pot of students, so I think it's great. I encourage my own kids to go and talk to the teachers all the time about.
Yeah, if you get a chance, watch it, like our board meeting last night, because a couple of the students who spoke, they were like remarkable.
Yeah.
I thought like, so well-spoken, so well-composed, and not only did they speak really well, like board members had questions, and like they were looking at the consultant, and a couple of the kids started walking right up to the microphone, kind of like we do, you know, like they were so in their own, like bodies, like just handling the presentation, took all the questions, answered them, shook everybody's hand when it was over, like so, very impressive.
Yeah, I feel like very enabling for the students, right? Like giving them a voice, and then that's just gonna boost morale all the way through. So I think it's very important that, you know, they continue doing it, so. And I think the one, the one student that kept speaking was a senior, and he was insinuating a little worry about when he leaves, he doesn't want to leave, and but he wants to kind of keep up with it a little bit, so maybe he'll work as a non-student body later to work with them, so.
That was my question, like how does it continue, and how do you pick the kids from a cross-section of the school?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Yeah, like all different academic levels, you know, all of that, you know?
Yeah. My understanding is it's a work in progress, where they're figuring out those, you know, those regions. They did say there was another.
I'm sorry. I do know they were 11th and 12th graders, so I do know that it's not freshmen and sophomores, it's 11th and 12th graders, and it was a mix of both, because I know that the couple, the young man that spoke last night, they're seniors. So I know they're looking to, you know, move the 11th graders up and then fill the vacancies, so they are looking at that, but I do know it's the 11th and 12th graders. How, we can ask Dr. McDowell, I'm not sure how they selected the kids, but I do know that it's upperclassmen.
Yeah, if you don't put the video up on YouTube, it's probably about 40, no, 30 to 45 minutes after the intro, or the opening, because the staff member of the year presentation took a while. Next up is 11.02, the PTA Liaison Report with Ms. Rotondo.
Yeah, so the meeting this month was deferred to next month, so no reports from the meeting. The next meeting is June 3rd, however, this is a very busy time of year for the PTA. If we look historically, earlier in this month, they did a phenomenal job celebrating the teachers. I know Dr. McDowell mentioned that, but I think I'd be remiss to not repeat that for everybody. Like, every single day was made to spoil and pamper our teachers, so well-deserved, very touching, very thoughtful, they did a great job, and they always work really hard, but that was very special. Also earlier in the month, they did a really nice job with muffins with mom, as they always They are gonna keep everybody busy two Saturdays in a row with a spring fling, May 31st, and then the townline yard sale, which benefits the PTA. The following Saturday, so June 6th, 7th, it's the Saturday after May 31st. Tons of work going on with the 5th Grade Promotion Committee, the 5th graders are in for lots of treats, there's a class event, is it launch? It's one of the bounce places.
Yeah, it's the one in, yeah, the Maple Shade one.
One of the Ms., kids bounce there. That's going on, then the following Friday, I think it's their Bloom Gold Night, there's, as Jimmy mentioned, the pool, like so tons of work to celebrate our 5th graders as they get ready to move on. And yeah, so the PTA is always busy, they're always looking for new members, and you can catch them on June 3rd at their next meeting.
Thank you. A question about PTA, so as a 5th grade graduating parent, I will no longer have kids in this district, is there a way that like non-parents can still support the PTA?
I think that's definitely something we can bring to them to get creative, they're very, very active on their Facebook, and make it be as simple as participating, I don't know how, but like there's a Venmo account, and maybe if you want to like, when it's time to send the candy canes or something, I don't know if like there's donor canes or whatever, but I can bring this to them, I don't want to make something up on the fly because I don't have an answer, but I, if there's a way that they can have contributions outside for the, on behalf of the students who left, I'm sure they would find a way to make that work. Also the yard sale, the other community things, like anything that's going on in the community, like the spring fling, the yard sale, that you don't have to have a child in the school to partake in, so I, you know, encourage involvement with those types of events as well.
Yeah, I just always get the, you know, every year I get the QR code saying like, you know, support Oakland PTA, and next year I won't get that, so I still want to throw in my $5 or whatever. So I'm going to 11.03, Mr. Rich Talby, OMSAC.
Thank you, I'm just pulling it up here. There we go. OMSAC updates, they're just waiting to hear back on funding for the upcoming year, so things are moving slowly with that, as it sometimes does. Great turnout from the parents in particular on gym night, so had a lot of help, which is great to hear. And then of course we have a scholarship coming up, that they'll celebrate an Oakland student graduating. And he said that'll be on Friday. That's it for OMSAC.
Okay, and then the last bullet is 11.04, Oakland Education Foundation with Mr. Schaefer, who's not here, so we'll postpone that until next month.
All right, just a couple of quick comments for community relations. One of the things the committee's talked about is exploring the potential of partnerships with the Borough Council, and looking for some reciprocity there, so if anybody on the board is interested in attending those meetings and kind of being there to chime in during public comment there and bring news back, let Therese know. And if anybody needs some motivation, since their meetings are on committee nights, that could certainly act as your committee role, if that's something you wanted to do, that way you didn't have to do double duty, so just put that out there. The committee also talked about the town hall sessions, that Collingswood has made good use of, we wanted to start that. They had talked about doing Fall Back to School Roundtable, and then one in the spring next year for the budget, and had those conversations. One thing that did come up, there's been a lot of talk about changes in Marshawn with the federal government and the Department of Ed, and I think we're seeing the first impacts of that with delays in our formulas for free and reduced lunch funding, and the pricing formula that goes along with that, so that's incredibly delayed, and accounts for a really good deal of money that the district brings in, so keep our fingers crossed on that. And then the other thing that came up, which I could bring up to Mr. Schaefer when he's back, came up to see if the foundation would be able to provide funding for busing for two theater trips for our kids to come, you know, go across town to Collingswood and attend performances there, so that was a great idea, I just want to make everybody aware. All right, that is it for School Community Relations and Policy. We've got nothing in miscellaneous, right?
HIB.
Or HIB, yeah. Moving on to item 12, we've got our HIB report for the month, and that is on a vote, do I have a motion to approve item 12.01?
So moved.
Second. Moved in second, and any comments or questions on a roll call?
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to our second public comment section of the night, this is for any topics that folks would like to share with the board, please remember to state your name, address, keep comments to five minutes or less. Any comments from anyone out there? You could, oh, that would be great, you could do a musical number.
I just want to let everybody know that it's Okie's birthday today, our school mascot, so we all said a big happy birthday to Okie today.
All right, happy birthday, Okie. That is exciting. All right, no other public comments, we'll close our public comment section, and moving on to item 14, motion to adjourn, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we are adjourned.